Let's pray. Father, thank you. Thank you for being good. We begin our prayer just with gratefulness that we get to be a part of your kingdom and your world. God, we're thankful that we get to be about your business. And we're thankful that we can celebrate the good things in this life that you provided for us. And so this morning, we invite you into this time. We pray that we would be guided by your wisdom and your principles. We're thankful that you provide that to us through your word. And so, God, we pray blessings on every individual here. And this commission, we pray blessings on every person that's being celebrated today. And each team and each member, God, we're thankful that we can celebrate these beautiful moments in life. And it's all because of you. So we love you and praise you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
By the way, this is a reply from the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Gentlemen, you've each received a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting. I'll answer a few questions.
Second, please.
Harvey. Second, about Commissioner Ivy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed nay? And it's our approved announcements and comments. As Commissioner Adams just said a few minutes ago, I think this is the best looking group of people that we've had at a county commission meeting since, I guess, since you got put in office. Maybe even since I got put in office in 2014. So a lot of black and gold here today. As a graduate of Wixburg, I'm certainly proud to see all the young people and see the sports programs excelling. And always, we always say this every year, that our favorite meeting of the year is the one where Queens come and visit. So I'm glad, glad we have a good crowd today. Any announcements or comments from the commission? I don't know. Okay. All right, well, I see Commissioner Ivy and I will step down for the first two. So first up, we have a recognition for Wixburg High School Softball 3A State Championship.
In front of them again. And they're going to graduate this year having not seen anybody dogpile in front of them again. Last year, we won it in 2A in a pretty dominant fashion. We scored 42 runs to zero in the state tournament. I only gave up two runs at the start of regional, didn't give up any of the runs after that. This year was a little tighter. The pitching was a little different. And we won two games. We beat St. James in the winter bracket championship 2-1. And then we beat St. James 4-3 in the state championship. So just a resilient bunch of girls. You know, they, they work hard every day. A lot of fun to be around, a lot of fun at practice. And just have, you know, a great winning attitude. They love each other. They work hard. And, you know, to repeat in 2A and then 3A is something special. Especially when it's only your second state championship at your school. Golf got one this year. That was three for Alabama High School. So it's just a special time. You say a streak. It's going to be really hard to maintain that streak. But we have a lot of young talent on this team as well. We have a lot of young players in our JV group that are really good. And I think we can get a streak going.
Okay.
I just hope they continue to work and just want it that much every year.
That's good. That's good. Any players want to say anything? This is y'all's opportunity.
Do you want to introduce them?
Yeah, yeah. Did you have to do that?
Everyone, all of them are not here. We have 16 here, but seven seniors. Y'all standing. Move. Sarah stuff out here. This is Sarah Turbin. She played centerfield for us. This is Ella Ace Kelly. Played first base. AK, I call her AK47. Addison Kelly played right field. She gunned a girl down in the winter bracket championship. That would have been the second, the second run to tie the game throughout the play. Doggy Gans played third base for us. Had some big hits throughout the tournament. Natalie Cole, she came to us two years ago from Providence. She's a pitcher. She was 24 and one this year with a .69 ERA. Telaya Lingo played shortstop for us the last couple of years. Came to us from Houston Academy. Batted at the bottom of the lineup. Telaya and Sarah, we had all our speed stacked eight and nine hole, which ended up being very crucial down the stretch. Emily Mathis played right field, left field for us. Seniors, that's her seven seniors. I said all seven, right? Juniors, y'all kind of stepped out because I don't want to miss anybody. Chloe Joyner, she played catcher for us, big time hitter. Ellie Cox, I know her a little bit. That's my daughter. She's a pitcher. She was 24 and three this year as a pitcher. 21 and three with a .72 ERA. Abby Ollberg played left field for us. Batted five hole, had an unbelievable state tournament. I think she hit almost, what, 600 in the state tournament? A lot of big hits for us. 10th grade, I don't think I got me any of them right. Was that all the juniors, right? 10th grade, Mackenzie McFarland. She's a utility player. She plays shortstop and catcher. 9th grade. Amy Wood played catcher, third base, kind of utility player for us. Ally Potter and Mallory both moved up from JV this year and helped us out there. Mallory's utility. Ally, she can play anywhere, played shortstop, third base, a lot of infield for us. 8th grade, right? 8th grade, Madison Wilson. She's an outfielder, utility player. And Kenley Holland is a pitcher and outfielder now. She's learned a lot of outfield throughout the years as a young player. And then Gracie Driscoll is an 8th grader that's not here with us. And Madam McFay is a junior that was unable to be here today.
Her mama too.
Coaches, sorry. They were up here. Jackie Amos, assistant coach. Monica Perky, volunteer coach, assistant coach. And then Joanna Marshall helped us this year. And she was unable to be here today as well.
Awesome. Awesome. Commissioner, did you have any?
I'd just like to say congratulations to y'all for doing this two years in a row. I had a niece that played several years. She also pitched, made it all the way down to the playoffs. And Gulf Shores won, made it to state. Just couldn't ever grasp the title during the state playoffs, during the time in which she played out there. I'm also a graduate of Wixburg High School. So it's nice to be up here, to be able to see the alma mater doing this in this day and time.
That's right. Let's give them a round of applause.
In that case, get back here.
That's you too.
Y'all do a little squat.
Yes, my.
Say, get your ass squat.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is another state championship team, also from Wixburg High School. What would you say to rename Wixburg Hattletown, Alabama?
That's it.
Wixburg High School Ladies Golf 1A through 3A State Championship Team. So if y'all will come, come forward.
First time there.
Wow.
Nice to meet you. That's awesome.
Coach.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And I heard Commissioner Adams say, first time there. The first time any school from Houston County has won a state title in golf, correct?
Correct.
Let's see. Won by 64 stroke margin. That's pretty amazing. That's usually what I get on the front, front nine on a good day. And every girl finished in the top 10 individual performance. So, I mean, it's like the Death Star of, of high school girls softball. Why don't you come talk about your team?
Sure.
Softball.
Well, thanks so much, really, for having us today. We, like you said, this was the first, obviously, the first time that Wixburg has ever won anything in golf. But it was the first time in Houston County history that a golf team has won something at the state level. But I, I may be the one behind the podium here and speaking, whatever, but like...
At a county commission meeting since, I guess, since you got put in office. Maybe even since I got put in office in 2014. So, a lot of black and gold here today. As a graduate of Wicksburg, I'm certainly proud to see all the young people and see the sports programs excelling. And always, we always say this every year, that our favorite meeting of the year is the one where the Queens come and visit us. So, I'm glad, glad we have a good crowd today. Any announcements or comments from the commission? I don't know. Okay. All right, well, I'll see Commissioner Ivy and I will step down for the first two. So, first up, we have recognition for Wicksburg High School Softball 3A State Championship.
In front of them again, and they're going to graduate this year having not seen anybody dogpile in front of them again. Last year, we won it in 2A in a pretty dominant fashion. We scored 42 runs to zero in the state tournament. Only gave up two runs at the start of regional, didn't give up any of the runs after that. This year was a little tighter, the pitching was a little different. And we won two games. We beat St. James in the winter bracket championship 2-1, and then we beat St. James 4-3 in the state championship. So, just a resilient bunch of girls, you know, they, they work hard every day. A lot of fun to be around, a lot of fun at practice, and just have, you know, a great winning attitude. They love each other, they work hard. And, you know, to repeat in 2A and then 3A is something special, especially when it's only your second state championship at your school. Golf got one this year, that was three from Alabama High School. So, it's just a special time. You say a streak, it's going to be really hard to maintain that streak, but we have a lot of young talent on this team as well. We have a lot of young players in our JV group that are really good, and I think we can get a streak going.
Okay.
I just hope they continue to work and just want it that much every year.
That's good, that's good. Any players want to say anything, this is y'all's opportunity.
You want to introduce them?
Yeah, yeah, do that.
Everyone, all of them are not here, we have 16 here, but seven seniors. Y'all standing, Sarah stuff out here. This is Sarah Turbin, she played centerfield for us. This is Ella Ace Kelly, played first base. AK, I call her AK47. Addison Kelly, played right field. She gunned a girl down in the winter bracket championship. That would have been the second, the second run to tie the game throughout the play. Doggy Gans, played third base for us, had some big hits throughout the tournament. Natalie Cole, she came to us two years ago from Providence. She's pitcher, she was 24 and one this year with a .69 ERA. Telaya Lingo, played shortstop for us the last couple of years, came to us from Houston Academy. Batted at the bottom of the lineup. Telaya and Sarah, we had all our speed stacked eight and nine hole, which ended up being very crucial down the stretch. Emily Mathis, played right field, left field for us, seniors, that's her seven seniors. I said all seven, right? Juniors, y'all kind of stepped out, so I don't want to miss anybody. Chloe Joyner, she played catcher for us, big time hitter. Ellie Cox, I know her a little bit, that's my daughter, she's a pitcher. She was 24 and three this year as a pitcher, 21 and three with a .72 ERA. Abby Ollberg, played left field for us, batted five hole, had an unbelievable state tournament. I think she hit almost, what, 600 in the state tournament? A lot of big hits for us. 10th grade, I don't think I got me into them right, was that all the juniors, right? 10th grade, Mackenzie McFarland, she's a utility player, she plays shortstop and catcher. 9th grade. Amy Wood, played catcher, third base, kind of utility player for us. Ally Potter and Mallory both moved up from JV this year and helped us out there. Mallory's utility, Ally, she can play anywhere, played shortstop, third base, a lot of infield for us. 8th grade, right? 8th grade, Addison Wilson, she's an outfielder, utility player. And Kenley Holland is a pitcher and outfielder now. She's learned a lot of outfield throughout the years as a young player. And then Gracie Driscoll is an 8th grader that's not here with us, and Madam McFay is a junior that was unable to be here today.
Her mama too.
Coaches, sorry, they were up here. Jackie Amos, assistant coach, Monica Perkey, volunteer coach, assistant coach. And then Joanna Marshall helped us this year, and she was unable to be here today as well.
Awesome, awesome. Commissioner, did you have any?
I'd just like to say congratulations to y'all for doing this two years in a row. I had a niece that played several years, she also pitched, made it all the way down to the playoffs. And Gulf Shores won, made it to state, just couldn't ever grasp the title during the state playoffs, during the time in which she played out there. I'm also a graduate of Wicksburg High School, so it's nice to be up here, to be able to see the alma mater doing this in this day and time.
That's right. Let's give them a round of applause.
In that case, get back here.
All right. Next item on the agenda is another state championship team, also from Wicksburg High School. What would you say to rename Wicksburg Hattletown, Alabama?
That's it.
Wicksburg High School Ladies Golf 1A through 3A State Championship Team. So, if y'all will come, come forward.
First time there.
Coach? Congratulations, and I heard Commissioner Adams say, first time there. The first time any school from Houston County has won a state title in golf, correct?
Correct, yes.
Let's see, won by 64 stroke margin, that's pretty amazing. That's usually what I get on the front, front nine on a good day. And every girl finished in the top 10 individual performance. So, I mean, it's like the Death Star of, of high school girl softball. Why don't you come talk about your team?
Sure. Well, thanks so much, really, for having us today. We, like you said, this was the first, obviously, the first time that Wicksburg has ever won anything in golf. But it was the first time in Houston County history that a golf team has won something at the state level. But I, I may be the one behind the podium here and speaking, whatever, but like, I did very little. It was all of them. And just to give you a little bit of a background, they're all seniors, and all of them started playing golf their freshman year. It's not that they picked up a club at five years old or 10 years old. They started whenever I kind of took over the golf program, and I recruited them, and I said, hey, you're not playing softball in the spring, so you're not doing anything, and you're all athletes, and I want you on my golf team. And so, they went from being cheerleaders and, and all that to saying, all right, well, fine, I'll, I'll, I'll try out golf. And we weren't good to begin with, I think I'll tell you that. But dang it, we're good now. And like you said, it was our, the state run, it's a two-day tournament, and we beat second place by 64 strokes, which is not small. But we beat third place by 164 strokes. And fourth place, we're in the final fourth course, but they were 174 behind us there. So, it, like, this small little group of girls, they look sweet and innocent, but they turned into the biggest bullies that you can imagine. But like, it's, it's all because they did the work. Like, you don't see the hours of the range, you don't see the tears. We fussed and bickered, and we're like married couple on the course, but they have terrible tan lines because of all the work that they did. And you don't see that, but I do, and so that's what's made this run so rewarding. And if I can, while I've kind of got the floor just a little bit, if I can maybe challenge the commissioners on this one, that today, we are recognizing the Queens, we're recognizing softball, we're recognizing girls' golf. All it takes is these girls to have an opportunity to do well. And like, this is proof, they're showing it, they can do it. So, anytime that, you know, if there's an opportunity to give young women an opportunity to succeed, please take it. I, I know that, that there are always cost constraints and things get cut, but please don't let it be girls' sports. Anything that we can do to make our girls in this area successful, I hope that we can do that, because I have a daughter of my own, she's not quite here yet. But like, these are the product of Houston County, and I'm proud of them, and they, they and everybody else in this room deserves absolute best. So, I just wanted to kind of speak on that just a little bit, but if I can, I'll introduce them. We got Elsoul here on the left, then Blakely Casey, and then Katie Brannon, and then Kate King. All four of them have free rides to go play, well, excuse me, free rides to, to go to college in-state. And that, that matters, this is a product of Houston County. Two of them, Kate and Katie, are going to be playing college golf. Katie at Shelton State, and then Kate at Southern Union. But all four of them have a whole lot more that they're going to go on to accomplish. We recognize and we're proud of this one, but my hope, and really my expectation, is that all of them are going to go on to do even bigger and better things than just a state title. So, with that, I'm going to invite each of them to speak. Don't not do that, but look, thank y'all so much for being here and, and giving us a platform, and we, we appreciate all the support that you give us, so thank you so much.
Just sum it up from speaking with the softball players, it, it's an honor to be up here with y'all representing Wicksburg Alma Mater. Y'all do something that I can't do, I try. It, it's a thing when you got coordination hitting that little white ball, especially when it's laying on the ground and not on the tee. It, it's kind of hard to get it up and get it in the air. So, y'all do something well beyond some of us older people cannot do.
Congratulations. Let's take a, take a photo. All right.
Thank y'all.
All right, now for the moment that y'all have been waiting for, we're going to recognize the Houston County Queens. So, why don't y'all stand up here with me? This is awesome. We, we always love having the Queens with us, and I will tell y'all, I don't think we've done this before, but, but one of y'all looks a little bit sassy. Which one of y'all was waving at? Was it you? So, if y'all want to come up and, and sit, sit in my chair and hold the gavel, and smile for a photo after the meeting is over, y'all are welcome to do that, okay? All right. All right, let's introduce, are y'all all here today?
Yes.
Future Little Miss Houston County, Emery York. Why don't you come up here, and I've got a little something for you. And we're going to get a stool made next year, I've already talked to our guy about it. Hold on just a second. Ms. Emery, why don't you tell us about yourself? Where, where do you go to school then? Headland, do you like, who's your favorite teacher at Headland? Ms. Jones, okay. You like, how long you been going to Headland now? Couple of years, two, what, what grade are you? Two years, okay. Now, what is your favorite thing to eat at the house when you're staying at home for the summer? What's your favorite snack?
Mac and cheese.
Mac and cheese, that is a good one, that is a good one, okay. So, do you have any big plans for the summer?
I like to swim in my pool.
Swim in your pool, wow, okay. Are y'all going to go to the beach or to the lake or anything?
We actually, yesterday, we came from the lake and, that, from the next day, we came from the beach.
Oh, wow. You saw all the jellyfish? You didn't get some, did you? That's good, that's good, all right. Anything else you want to say? All right, well, let's congratulate Ms. Emery York. All right, next up, we have Little Miss Houston County, Emmy Akos. You might need this little step stool too. Hold on to me and step up there. Got it? All right. Ms. Emmy, now let's see, you go to, is it Wicksburg High School? Okay, so you know a lot of the people that were up here a few minutes ago that was getting honored, okay. What is your favorite subject at Wicksburg?
Music.
Music? Do you have an instrument that you like to play?
Cymbals.
Cymbals, woo, does mommy and daddy love the cymbals? They like you when you play the cymbals when you practice?
Maybe.
Maybe? I think they do, I think they'll miss those little cymbals one day, what you think? I think they probably will. Well, what is, what are you, do you have any plans for the summer?
Going to the beach.
Going to the beach? Okay. Do y'all have a place that you, like a favorite place that you go?
St. George Island.
St. George, that is a nice one. You have a favorite restaurant at the beach that you go to? What do you like, you, you, you like any seafood, you like fish, or you like to eat some crabs?
Crabs.
You like crabs? You're my kind of girl, you and I would get along very well, I think. I love me some blue crabs. What else you want to talk about while you're up here? The floor is yours, anything else you want to say? Give a shout out to mama, or your brother, or you have a, you have a brother or sister?
Sister.
You have a sister, what is her name?
Lucy.
Lucy, is she an older sister or a younger sister?
Older.
Older sister, okay. Any other you want to talk about? All right, well, let's give Ms. Emmy Akos a round of applause. Teacups.
It's a project.
It's a project?
It's a teacup, and then you put soil at the bottom, then you put flowers in it, and then you put various stuff in it, and then you give it to the people, the elderly people. Whether it's working, you put it in the middle of the table, and then the flowers move in.
Well, that's very nice, that's very nice. Well, that's awesome of you, I'm glad that you're doing that. Now, y'all, I think y'all all have projects, don't they? Okay, okay, all right. Good deal, good deal, well, congratulations, and we wish you the best of luck, okay? And the Miss Peanut, which is coming up in a couple of months, you excited about that? All right, let's wish her good luck. All right. Let's see, next, we have young Miss Houston County, Ella Jane Engel, did I say that correct? Let's see, you may not need the, do you want to stand in this? Why don't you tell everybody a little bit about yourself this morning? You have any things that you're going to be looking forward to doing this summer?
To the beach.
Guys going to the beach, I think the beach is a popular place. And what do you like to do at the beach? Do you like to play in the water?
Yes, sir, and I like to go to Pineapple Willie's.
Pineapple Willie's? That's a good place. What's your favorite thing to order at Pineapple Willie's?
Fish.
Fish? Fish is good for you, did you know that? Fish is good, if you don't fry it, if you fry it, it might not be so good for you. So, let's see, you attend Ashford Elementary School, and you are in the, you were in the second grade, so you're going to be a third grader next year. So, what is your favorite subject at school?
Math.
Math? You can make a lot of money if you're good at math, you know that? Math is a hard subject, hard subject. So, do you have any plans, like, do you think you know what you want to be when you grow up?
Yes, sir.
What is it?
A doctor.
A doctor, we need a lot of those, we need a lot of those. They don't make doctors like they used to for some reason. Well, anything else you want to talk about this morning?
Sir.
All right, Ms. Ella Jane Engel, I think I said that correctly, let's give her a round of applause, congratulations. All right, next up, we have Junior Miss Houston County, Macy Beth Falls. And you also attend Ashford, Ashford Middle School, and you were in the sixth grade, so you're going to be a seventh grader. So, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name is Macy Beth Falls, I go to Ashford Middle School, I'm about to be in the seventh grade, and yeah.
You got anything you're looking at, are you going to the beach too? Are y'all going to go have like a Queens day at the beach? Y'all need to, I think everybody's going there, yeah, y'all should do that, yeah. So, Junior Miss, so you don't have to compete Miss Peanut, not yet, so you got a few more years for you to compete in that. So, anything, anything else you're looking forward to doing this summer?
We're very busy this summer, we have a lot of stuff to do.
Okay. You play sports, playing sports, what do you play?
I'm a cheerleader and I do volleyball.
Okay, all right, well, good. My, my little girl used to do volleyball, but now she just does cheer. She's going to be a senior next year, so you're a pretty good volleyball player? Okay, well, keep working at it, that's something you can work on this summer, you'll be even better at it. But you, you, you look like a pretty good cheerleader, I guess, right? Okay, that's what I thought. All right, well, anything else you want to talk about?
No, sir.
All right. Just Macy Beth Falls, y'all please give her a round of applause. Next, we have Teen Miss Houston County, Erin Devine, attends Slocum Middle School, and you were in the eighth grade. So, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I go to Slocum High School now, I'm going into ninth grade, and recently, I made varsity volleyball, and I'm really excited about that, because it's my favorite sport. And I actually made all-state volleyball, and that's where all the best volleyball players in the state play against each other at the game.
Oh, wow.
And that's happened in two weeks, I'm really excited for that.
Okay, and where y'all playing at?
Birmingham.
Okay, well, that's exciting. Now, I was, I was told to ask you, what is your favorite thing about your mama? Other than she makes really awesome TikTok videos, apparently.
That one stumped me out a little bit.
Okay. I'm sure if you think about it, you'll, you'll, you'll come up with something, but yeah, I saw some of those TikTok videos. I, I, I think, I think I threw a like that way, so anything else you want to talk about this morning? You caught a fish, this past, did you go to the beach? You went fishing this past weekend?
Yes, sir, I went Wednesday, and we just came back yesterday. We went fishing like three days in a row, we had a lake about five. Been really tired, but it was really fun, we got a lot of fish.
What was your favorite fish that you caught?
Probably the amberjack, because they fought really hard.
Is that the one, the video I've watched this morning? Yeah, I watched that video this morning, so, all right, well, Ms. Erin Devine, congratulations, let's, let's give her. All right, now we have Miss Houston County, Addison Claire Timely, attends Rehoboth. Ms. Addison, I'm glad you're here with us today, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and your platform, and your plans to win Miss Peanut?
Okay. I will be a senior at Rehoboth in the fall, and I'm so grateful for this opportunity to be Miss Houston County after competing last year and not winning any titles. It's truly been a really humbling experience, and I'm really grateful for it. My community service is called Nurture for the NICU. It was inspired by my own experiences and my brother's being a NICU babies. I was in Montgomery for 10 days, and while I was there, my mom received a care basket full of items that just gave her hope that I was going to be okay, and that she would get to use them with me. And so, I figured that that was my sign to pay it forward and do the same for families around the Wiregrass. So, I collect donations and put them together in a bag and deliver them to NICU, or to babies in the NICU, because they don't allow parents in there all the time, and that's very sad. But when they get in there, it gives them something to look forward to and something to hope that they'll be able to use with their baby when they bring their baby home.
Well, that is amazing, you know, we all go through tough times, sometimes, you know, you never know what someone's dealing with, but just to know that someone is thinking about you and wishing you well, that, that can make a world of difference. So, I salute you for doing that, and certainly wish you the best of luck in Miss Peanut. I know, I know we have a history of, you don't always win Miss Peanut, Miss Houston County doesn't, but we have a pretty strong showing, so definitely wish you the best of luck. Anything else you want to talk about before we wrap up? Well, let's congratulate Ms. Addison Timely. Somebody wants to introduce themselves? All right, that's always fun, that's always fun, glad you are with us today. Yep, thank you, thank you. Commission always keeps me straight. Now, I'm looking for my agenda. Now, we have to get down to the other stuff that we have to do. It's not quite as fun as what we just did, but moving on to the regular agenda, we have, let's see. Nine items on the agenda that were approved at Thursday's meeting. So, the first item is a request to approve the 2024 insolvent's, errors, and taxes, and litigation, and uncollected insolvent's and litigations for previous years for final settlement with the state of Alabama. So, motion. Motion by Commissioner Harvey, second by Commissioner Adams. Any questions or discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is a request from Houston County Personnel Board to approve Juneteenth as a county holiday in conjunction with the state, excuse me, with the state holiday schedule. Question by Commissioner Ivy, second by Commissioner Adams. Questions or discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number three is a request to approve resolution to transfer real property to Industrial Development Board of the City of Dover.
Second.
Question by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Ivy. This is dealing with property at the industrial, I'm sorry, with the distribution park. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number four is a request to approve service agreement with Service Express for hardware and software support for equipment to be located at the Emergency Operations Center. Motion by Commissioner Ivy, second by Commissioner Adams. Any questions or discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye, opposed nay. Motion passes. Item number five, excuse me, is a request to approve payment of invoice in the amount of three thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars to Ramsey, Backsley, and McGoole for the benefit of Cottonwood Rescue and approve a company budget amendment. Motion, second. Question by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Ivy. Questions or discussion on this item? All in favor say aye, opposed nay. Motion passes. Item number six is a request to appropriate nine hundred fifty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cent for the Series twenty-twenty-five bond proceeds to reimburse the county for allowable economic development expenditures. Question by Commissioner Ivy, second by Commissioner Adams. Questions or discussion on this item? All in favor say aye, opposed nay. Motion passes. Item number seven is a request from the City of Taylor to assist with dirt and grade work of pavilion and playground pad. Motion, second. Question by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Ivy. Questions or discussion? All in favor say aye, opposed nay. Motion passes. Item number eight is a request to enter into an agreement with Aldo for funding of MPO Project S T P S U dash three five two three two five zero for resurfacing Ashford Road. Motion, second. Question by Commissioner Adams, second by Ivy. Questions or comments or discussion? All in favor say aye, opposed nay. Motion passes. Item nine is a request to enter into agreement with Aldo for funding of MPO Project S T P S U dash three five two one two five six for resurfacing in Machine Road. We have a question by Commissioner Harvey, second by Commissioner Adams. Questions or discussion on this item? All in favor say aye, opposed nay. Motion passes. Uh, we do have a privileges at the floor, but we'll do that at the end. Staff reports, Mr. Chief Administrative Officer. Madam Chief Administrative Officer. Uh, Mr. County Engineer.
We have foreclosed roads, uh, cemetery, iris, road, collis meadows, be hides, and those are all cross-trained places.
Yes, yeah. Doing cross-trains this year, sure. Uh, Mr. County Attorney. Any questions for the staff out of the commission? Alright, we do have one item, uh, privileges of the floor, Ms. Rachel Reneva. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, if you want to come forward, um, just stand there and face us, just turn that microphone around. And you'll, there's a little touchpad there. If you press that, make sure that light, lights up. Record everything. She's going to be talking to us about the Rehoboth High School NJ ROTC program. Rachel, you have five minutes, the floor is yours.
Good evening, um, or good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Rachel Reneva. I stand before you as a concerned parent and an advocate who has seventy-eight voters behind me, for sure, parents, and, um, VFW and the American Legion. Of all my supporters as far as, this is kind of Hail Mary, okay? My Hail Mary is I would like to implore you guys to please speak to Superintendent Brandy White and ask him not to cancel the Rehoboth Navy J ROTC program. And the reason that it matters to the board, the commission, is because there's five hundred thousand dollars that goes between Houston County Commission and the school board. I don't know the way, I just saw it in the budget, okay? And so that's why it matters. The other part that matters is that the Rehoboth Navy J ROTC cadets, they participate in the VFW cleanup in Taylor. The Taylor Made Festival, they do the childcare services for like bouncy houses, they stand all there. They also clean up the City of Taylor Park. They also clean the Rehoboth Park and spread the mulch. And they didn't do that this year. They march in Mardi Gras parade, they do the Miracle League, they go support the special needs children. They do Toys for Tots. They do turkeys from heaven, they do Salvation Army food pantry. They do Peanut Festival parking for several weekends. They also do our high school football games. And sometimes they participate in the Special Olympics um, as just like helpers or whatever they need. Our cadets are always out in the community working, whereas other ROTCs are still gearing up. Houston County and Dothen City Schools is already oversaturated with Army ROTC programs. What's different is the Houston County Career Academy is not funded. That is all taxpayers' dollars, which is the cost sheets that I put in front of you. And the idea is the superintendent does want to get it funded. However, I talked with the Army Headquarters in the email in front of you. There is no funding available. They're actually oversaturated by eleven, um, programs across the country. It is a moving target waiting list. So the Army has to close eleven programs in order to open ours Houston Career Academy. Um, Mr. Adams, I think that you may also be, um, familiar with the military, if I did my homework.
I am. I'm actually retired military, but I'm also the Sergeant Major at Delta High School.
That's what I thought. Yes, sir. And I know that our school in Rehoboth has had some personnel issues. And us as parents, we don't want to just lose our program. We're not here saying, of course, we love our teachers, but we're not here saying, save our teacher. If that's an administrative factor, then please ask the superintendent, put a job opening. If you don't hire somebody, he still has until June fourth to cancel it. He did send his letter, that's at the very back. But the area commander, Jonathan Shaw, said that he will wait to cancel it to see if we as a community can change his mind. It has like four questions, the Houston County, absolutely, it's just a single sheet of paper. Um, the other thing is that our students will be unable to attend Houston County Career Academy ROTC. It's going to prevent them from going all year long. It's a, they're going to have to go one semester at a time. There's a continued continuity issue with that. You grow students through ROTC programs all year long. They begin freshman year and they're a totally different student at the end of freshman year, the full year. Having half a semester is not going to benefit the kids. And the reason that is, is English, math, science, history, career prep. Even these Wixburg students, it takes up two class periods to get to Houston Career Academy. Right now, with Rehoboth Navy J ROTC, it takes one. Sophomores will face the similar constraints. Juniors are in their most critical year, that's your college application year. And my oldest son won sixty-five thousand dollars to University of Alabama, Alabama, partially because of the Rehoboth ROTC, the Colorado Fort Carson ROTC. We were already under, um, previous instructor. And also other ROTCs. May I have a minute or?
You can, you can wrap up, yeah.
Okay. Our seniors, we're, upcoming seniors, were told they cannot participate. There's, they don't have room in their schedules. They, they've already been in the program for three years. They're going to have to give it up. They will not be able to graduate on time. There's not enough room in their schedules. Band students will have to choose either ROTC or, um, banned because of the time constraint. Rehoboth High School has been open this whole time and other schools have always been able to have the option to send their kids there. We just needed the two principals' permissions. Please, we, as a community, we would really appreciate it. The, the American Legion veterans, the VFW veterans, and my parents. We would really appreciate it if you guys at least ask him to review this or even put it off a year. Any of those solutions are available. Um, the cost savings factor does not make sense. The Houston County Rehoboth High School has seventy thousand dollars of Army funds in their budget. And that money, if it's not spent on their international trip to Washington DC, they leave on Friday for Sea Purge Robotics. If it's not all spent in Washington DC, which it shouldn't be, they have to return it to the Department of the Navy. That is not money because it's the state and Houston County. It is just forfeited. Even Commander Shaw doesn't see it. I think I've touched all of the important, the human cost. I think I've touched all the important factors. You guys understand?
We appreciate you bringing this, uh, before us and we'll certainly take it under advisement. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Be no further business to consider on today's agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you.